So, I want to thank you all for coming. It looks like I'm very pleased that Harry sent out a tremendous invitation to everybody.[14.51][14.51](laughter) And I think we're gonna have a pretty nice evening here. At least, I'm looking forward to it myself. As usual, the first meeting after -- of the TMMA, after the town meeting, is an opportunity for the moderator to tell us about what happened at town meeting from his perspective. And it gives us an opportunity to tell the moderator what we saw happen at town meeting. So, without further, I'll -- we'll start with Sandy.
Well, this is really an opportunity for you to raise questions and issues about town meeting, not for me to tell you what my perspective is, which is always, well, the perspective from on high. So, the usual format is that you ask questions or raise issues that you want me to respond to, and so I open the floor to -- and you have to ask or raise. There being no issues.[92.04][92.04](laughter)
I have a question.
Yes.
Two questions, really. When is the recorded vote system going to be upgraded or whenever needs to be done?
Unfortunately, the -- it turned out that the only person that we had trained to run the system was David, and David had a medical emergency before the last session of town meeting and couldn't attend. But I will make sure that we have a backup to David for now on.
The second part of my question. When will we start recording all votes?
Pardon?
When will we start recording all votes?
Well, the --
Here, here.
The system calls for anyone who's interested in having a recorded vote to make a motion and for 35 town meeting members to agree that that's appropriate. Certainly not all questions that come before town meeting are really appropriate for recorded votes, and it's up to you to -- up to you as town meeting members to decide what you want recorded. I'm certainly against recording everything because we can zip through many of our motions in very short order without taking the recorded vote and burdening, by the way, the town clerk's office, who has to post all of this and put it online. So, I think there were only two or three recorded votes this time. That's a little unusual for an annual town meeting. But it's really up to the -- up to town meeting to decide whether and to what extent it wants to record our votes. So, I don't know if that's a satisfactory answer to the --
Well, I just to carry this one step further is that, you know, I realize that two years out after a town meeting and some issue comes up, I thought, "How did I vote on that issue? I don't even remember." And if all these were recorded, when could go back and see how they can vote it afterwards?
That's certainly true.[260.32][260.32](laughter)
I'm marking my warrant.
Yes.
So, when will the --
Could you --
Oh, but I'm sorry.
I suggest that you announce your name and precinct.
Okay, Kev Andrews, 15. You're calling him.
Yes.
Okay. So, when will the recorded votes from the last town meeting we just had be online?
I think they already are.
They should be.
No. I didn't -- I can't find it. I mean, I can find the results, but it's not the recorded votes, and I also have trouble finding last November's. Were there no --
Okay, no, no, they're all there. If you go to town --
I found last May's.
No, last November's are there, and they were up on the recorded vote site, too.
Well, Tricia said they were there for -- we're, of course, interested in Article 14. So, they were there, then they were gone, and I can't find them. But I'm not savvy about finding these things.
Well, I'm -- I don't have anything to do with posting the recorded votes. That's the town clerk's office. And the town clerk is usually very good about that, the next day's service. If you have a problem --
Call you.
Yeah, I suggest you call the town clerk. Yes.
Jane Gilman, precinct 7. I wondered, some of the presentations at meetings rely on visuals or are expanded to visuals. Would there be a way to dim the lights in the auditorium briefly?
Well, the problem this time is that the projection lights were faulty, and we know how to fix it, but we couldn't get the proper lighting in time for our town meeting. But that, I would be very surprised if that wasn't fixed the next town meeting.
Can I ask, who prepares the book with the warrant that we get? Is that from the clerk also?
Well --
Because what I would love to see, if it's possible, is where the listing of advisory committee is on that first page. Could we have their precinct number or any other designation?
Well, that's certainly possible, and the selectmen's office is responsible for putting together that book. And I will ask the -- the -- each one has a precinct or is at large, and that can certainly be reported on the advisory committee page.
Thank you.
Yep.
It is in the green handbook, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Directory, yeah, directory.
Right, but --
But it can also certainly be transported to the combined reports.
John Bassett, precinct 6. I -- not really a question. I like it that you take pains to schedule the time of articles when people who are particularly interested attend. You've done that in some cases where there were some students who were involved, and I'd be happy to see more of that. I realize you can't do that a lot. There are -- we sometimes go to town meeting in Rockport, Mass., which is a much smaller place, and there, and probably some other towns, they take great pains to do the opposite. There's no set sequence of articles, so you have no idea when an article is going to come. They actually go through the --
It's intentional.
The process of drawing little numbered balls out of magic glass.
Well, there's a reason for that, John, and it's that at an open town meeting, when you've got a constituency consisting of all registered voters, if they knew when an article was going to be dealt with, presumably you might get a flood of interested authorities. And so, an open town meeting is different from a representative town meeting in that respect.
That's what Rockport has, but I don't think they have a quorum. They do. In Carlisle, it's when 150 show up instead of --
And they're --
But I don't think that Rockport does, actually.
Well, each town has a different quorum requirement, and many towns in Massachusetts have a zero quorum requirement, many open town meetings. Ours and most representative town meetings is a majority of town meeting members. But to get back to your issue, the basic format is that the selectmen lay out the order of the articles, and it's up to you, and it's your prerogative, to change the order for whatever purpose. And we had the order changed because, in one case, a co-petitioner was absent for the first session and couldn't be there until the second session. We had two articles where there were students from Brooklyn High School who couldn't attend for one reason or another the one session, and we postponed until the second. I think mainly to get the article in the beginning of the session. And I can't remember what the --
There was the rule, the rule of pace.
Yeah, and the pace. So, there are many different reasons why you might want to advance an article or fix a time for it to be heard, and there were three of them. There were three reasons. But it's not to me to make the change. What I have to do is take a motion to change the order of the articles and have it voted on by town meeting. And if there's any semblance of responsibility to give a town meeting almost always, as always, virtually always, go on by the -- yeah?
Well, that was actually one of the things I wanted to bring up.
Who are you?[672.13][672.13](laughter) Sorry.
We were at Old Street, precinct 8. Because we took up the budget the second night before all those four articles which we voted to take up at the beginning of night two, a lot of the school children left, and I was watching them, and they moved back to the auditorium, so they didn't get a chance to actually participate or watch anything with this. And I don't know why you inserted the budget when you did when we had already voted to do these.
Well, that was a calculation on my part. I thought we ought not to interrupt the deliberation on the budget with a bunch of articles that -- where the high school students could participate. And in fact, the -- those who were presenters stayed around for the presentations after we dealt -- finished with the budget. So, I'm not -- I don't think -- I'm not ashamed of having made that decision.
Well, we lost a lot of the students that went back.
Pardon?
We lost a lot of the students that went back. Pardon?
Okay. Not okay, but that's --
That's what happened.
That really was a result of the extraordinary participation by town meeting members in the deliberation of the budget, which caused it to carry over to the second night, which in my 22 years of moderating town meeting has never happened. That is, we've always dealt with the entire budget the first night. So, what I set up with the interested parties in those articles was to put them first thing on Thursday, but you guys were abnormally inclusive in this.
Dave Cannell, precinct 7. Just as a follow-up, when you just mentioned that the selectmen actually set the original order of the warrants, and that's the numerical sequence, I assume?
Yep.
And by default, is that done according to the dates by which the articles are submitted, or is there some other rationale?
No, there's -- if you track back through the warrants, you'll see that there's a sequence. For instance, in the annual town meeting, there are a group of six or seven standard articles that are non-controversial, but have to be dealt with by town meeting, and then we deal with the budget. And then we -- they typically set up, and this is not probably any kind of conspiracy with me, I don't have anything to do with this, but it seems like a reasonably logical sequence. After the budget, we deal with regulatory articles, and then we get to resolutions. And unfortunately, what that encourages is that town meeting members who are not interested in the resolution articles, which after all have no significant legal effect, often leave town meeting early. But that's a choice that the Sixth Floor has made, and I am not about to contest it, certainly. Yes?
Susan Brenner for precinct 7. Concerned the issue of supplementary mailings. I know there's a lot of email correspondence about that, and I'd love to point out that some of us don't get our regular mail delivery until extremely late in the day. I get mine between 6:30 and 7:00 p.m. So that if I don't actually get it by the Monday before, it arrives after I've had to leave to go to town meeting. So I think it's really important that their cutoff point for submission of the materials be such that everyone can get the supplemental mailings by, you know, at least Monday.
Yeah, we're trying to deal with that, and what we're up against is the inefficiency of the U.S. Postal Service. This supplemental mailing was brought to the South Postal Annex at 7:30 on Friday evening and was assured that it would be, since it was there before 10:00 p.m., that it would be delivered the next day. Well, that really didn't happen. And in fact, I didn't get my mailing until Tuesday, and many of you didn't. I think a majority of town meeting got it Monday. But in any event, we're up against the inefficiencies of the postal service, and what we're going to do is to back the deadline by 24 hours so that from now on, the deadline for the supplemental mailing will be Wednesday instead of Tuesday. That means, for instance, that the advisory committee will have to have its last adjudicatory meeting on Tuesday night instead of Thursday night, and Sean doesn't have to stay up until 3:00 in the morning to write up the articles.
So they will be mailed that Thursday?
They'll be mailed presumably Thursday evening instead of Tuesday, Friday evening, and we hope that that will increase the percentage of town meeting members who get the supplemental mailing at least 24 hours before the next -- before the first session of town meeting. But who knows? I mean, we're dealing with bureaucratic deterioration. And we'll try to counteract that, but you can't really back it up too far. But we figure that we'll try backing it up a day and see how that works. So, let's hope. Yep.
Sean?
Can I comment just briefly on this from the advisory committee's standpoint? There's certainly a need, I think, for us, and in some cases the petitioners, to get going on resolutions earlier. There's always a tendency to put off resolutions because they come up at the end of town meeting. And unlike articles put on by the selectmen or by a department, a citizen petitioner might not have the same kind of schedule. We've had requests to go later because of travel and other -- or because they're still working on some changes. But I think the advisory committee sees that those resolutions are often the last things to go. They stretch out right into the deadline. We'll try to do them first instead of at the end, and that should help in reducing the number of supplementary mailings and the complexity of some of those mailings. The one thing that we have less control over is collective bargaining, and sometimes those negotiations, maybe always those negotiations, go down to the wire. And if they're going to get on the -- if it be considered at a town meeting, I guess they'll just have to reach an agreement by Tuesday instead of by Thursday or whenever there's time for the selectmen and the advisory committee vote to vote.
Yeah, the wire will be backed up by a couple of days, and that's -- there's nothing bad about that.
Ruthanne?
Ruthanne Snyder, precinct 6. So I'm interested in the issue of eminent domain, and I understand, I saw that it was one of the -- on the last article on the warrant, there's a collection of reports, and the eminent domain report was one of those articles, one of those reports. I'm wondering, when do we get to talk about that? When did -- why isn't it presented to us? I really think that it's a very pertinent issue right now. We should have a collective conversation about it.
Well, the committees that considered eminent domain and the zoning issue and, what was it?
Leaf blowers.
Yeah, leaf blowers, were authorized at the fall town meeting. And each of those three, they were moderators committees, although the eminent domain committee, I think, was a combination of moderator and advisory committee at one keys. But each of those committees submitted an interim report at this town meeting, and each of -- which appeared under Article 23. And each of them will presumably have a final report and any proposed warrant articles before us at the next fall town meeting in November.
So that's when it would come up for discussion, if it was on the warrant in the following --
But there was nothing on the warrant involving action on any of those committees or their subject matter. And we're all waiting with, some of us, maybe not me, but some of us, we bated breath for the November town meeting to see what these committees are going to propose as solutions to the problems that they were handed.
Well, maybe then to earn you for a second, maybe that's an issue that the TMMA could bring up and have a discussion about to adjudicate.
Yes, yes, we could. There's a lot on our plates for you to turn, it sounds like. Anyone else? Tricia.
Okay. I'd like to know why the selectmen get to vote at town meeting when they're not members of the legislative branch of government and --
By statute.
By statute?
Yes. They are members, town meeting members at large by statute.
Are there some towns where the selectmen don't vote?
Yes, yes. A lot of towns.
Are they by statute or by law?
By statute.
Interesting. So why is it that we follow the statute and other towns don't?
Well, I can't really answer that question. The statute under which we're organized calls for selectmen, the at-large members, and if you don't like it, you can propose a change to the statute that --
And that's been done before. The original statute that was -- that set up our town meeting had like the cemetery, the head of the cemeteries was an at-large town meeting member, and there were a whole bunch of others. And that has been revised.
Oh, so it's --
So, but now it's just the selectmen and --
Is it specifically for the town clerk? And is the advisory committee?
Yes.
And that can be amended, you're saying, aren't you?
It has been done before, so it would seem like it could be done again.
When was amended last time at the cemetery and stuff like that?
1948 or something.
Didn't we have a discussion recently about --
I remember, that's the truth.[1408.13][1408.13](laughter)
Trustee who won the Hill Cemetery were once elected at large by the town.
Yeah, that's true.
I remember when that was done, in the '70s.
Another question I have is, how does one move for a recount of a ballot vote?
You don't. Once I announce it, it's -- that's the result.
There's no way to get a recount of that?
No. I mean, in certain situations, like a hand vote or a voice vote, you can doubt my announcement of the result. And if seven town meeting members doubt it, there's a counted vote by the Phillips or by the electronic voting. But once the ballots are in, the results of the -- the tellers have reported the results, and I've announced it, that's it. And that was it, 89 to 94.[1476.83][1476.83](laughter)
Jane Gilman, precinct 3. This is a procedural question. After we took so much time with the town budget, there wasn't a lot of time on the school budget, and I felt like I needed to vote. I felt like a gun was to my head because I was aware of the time we had, so I voted with insufficient information from my perspective. So my question is, what would the moderator have done if the discussion had been attenuated like the town budget was?
Well, I don't know.[1517.53][1517.53](laughter) Because fortunately, I wasn't faced with that issue. But I can tell you that what the school department has agreed to do is to publish its budget summary considerably earlier than the first night of town meeting, which was not very useful to us at all. And I think the new Assistant Superintendent of the Administration of Finance has agreed to make it available to town meeting members with the combined reports. So you'll have two weeks to chew on it, and I think her summary was helpful, but it raised questions that, of course, you could, if you get the thing early enough, you'll be able to generate appropriate questions. We did have a 45-minute discussion of the school budget at the second session, so I don't feel like town meeting was deprived of the opportunity to ask questions and get answers from the school department, the school committee.
Time for one more. Diana?
Diana Swiegel, precinct 2. Just to continue on about the school budget, if it's provided with the combined reports, I would hope it's also posted online. I don't think it was this year, and that would also help.
There'd probably be a question for the next chapter here tonight. Mr. Moderator, thank you very much.
Happy to hear if anyone is ready.
Oh, all right. Are there other questions from anyone? Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, the next group of people are going to discuss the school budget, and we'd like to have Michael Sandman, Mary Ellen Dunn, and Dr. Connolly come forward. And I need to apologize for Dr. Connolly omitting his name from the agenda and, you know, because I wasn't sure who he was going to make it. So come on up to the front here. You won't be on camera if you're not in the front row.[1684.61][1684.61](laughter) Now, you have a video or something?
Not a video.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay. And you received the training on how to do that, right?[1703.33][1703.33](laughter) Oh, I love this part. So -- We also take this note to say there's a -- as you come in the door there, there's a bucket of money that's not to be given away. We're hoping that you're going to contribute to it. It's an attempt to collect the dues for the TMMA for us to have these functions. And we were not very successful in trying to have it on town meeting night, which we sometimes do. I just, we were overwhelmed by the teachers and so forth. But that is there, and they are voluntary. We suggest $5 a year or so. One other thing I'd like to mention, too, if I might even take away here. Town meeting, this is a voice of the people. It's a video that was put out by the Moderators Association, Massachusetts Moderators Association. And we have two people in the room, well, one is still in the room, that were featured prominently on here. John Bassett is mentioned, has a piece in here, and Sandy Gadsby is also in here. But this is available through the library system. I'd like also to see if we can have it on permanent here at the -- I'd like also to see if we can have it on permanent here at the, in the library here. And in fact, I'd like to produce another one that's particularly in Brookline. Needham had one, and I saw the one that Needham put out, it was excellent, but it was Needham-oriented. I'd like to have a Brookline-oriented town meeting film. So that's something I'm going to try to be working on in the next little bit. Anyway, you folks...
We will be in just a sec.
Ready to roll?
We just have to get over to connections.
Oh, okay.
One second, I'm going to get something over.
Maybe I get stunned with that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Joe Conley, your interim superintendent for not enough three weeks. Who's counting? I just thought it might be interesting for you to get an outside point of view. This is my thirtieth year as a superintendent of schools in Massachusetts, most of them offshore. And I've worked in a number of school systems. And this is my first year as interim superintendent in Brookline. I've been here as building principal for two or three years in the past, but never directly involved in the school budget and the interaction between the board of selectmen and advisory committee and the school committee. And I've had that pleasure this year. And I thought I might just give you a few observations. My experience over the years as superintendent has always had an excellent working relationship with the finance committee towns I've worked in. But there's always been that tug and pull between how much percentage of the school budget versus the town budget. And it's always been a struggle, but we've always got through it. And I think your school-town partnership is a very, very effective process. I can't tell you how impressed I am and how well it works. There's good dialogue, there's good support, there's good sensitivity between the town and schools. And I think the end result is everyone is a winner. Because it's just an open dialogue at all times, trying to make the most, kind of stretch as far as you can with revenues available to the best interest of the town. So I'm very, very impressed with that process you have in place. I'm also impressed with the fact, and you may take this for granted in Brookline, but in most school systems or towns, the school department is located in the high school or one of the other schools and not in town hall. And this is my first experience in thirty years of having the school department located in town hall next to all the other town departments. And that also is a very, very beneficial operation. The dialogue between the town, the town department heads and the school department heads is constant day in and day out. We're cooperating, we're working with one another. It's really a very, very effective team effort. I think the fact we all share the same building is a plus. We have a sensitivity for each other's job. This is my first year working with Mary Ellen Dunn, new finance director. And Mary Ellen Dunn, I think, has done an outstanding job this year. Luckily for both Mary Ellen and I, we're kind of on the same page with the philosophy of the budget. We believe, we believe the budget should be transparent, should be detailed. If we can't defend it, it shouldn't be in the budget. And I think Mary Ellen has done a terrific job this year making the budget transparent and making it very, very detailed and accountable. There's a lot we do and we're not done yet. It's going to continue to improve over the years. And I only wish I could be here the next few years to see the fine work I know Mary Ellen's going to do. So that's just my overview compliments having been involved in the school budget process this first year here in Brookline. It's been a pleasure.
I'm Mike Sandman, the school budget subcommittee chair of the advisory committee. And I drew the short straw to go first, or maybe it's the long straw, I'm not sure. And so, Ernie asked me to talk about what the advisory committee does when it looks at the school budget. I do want to say that in the combined reports, there's about an eight-page discussion of the school budget in a reasonable amount of detail. And while it doesn't exactly match what the school department said, because we look at some different things than the school department wants to emphasize to you, if you, when you get the combined reports, I can promise you that that, that section is worth reading. It will answer a lot of your questions about the school budget, and particularly about some of the long-term issues, which is actually what I'm going to focus on here. So just a quick recap, where the money comes from in Brookline generally. It comes from property taxes, almost seventy-eight percent, from state aid, from state education aid, which is a separate line item, from little bits and pieces here and there, local receipts, excise taxes, fees, permits, parking fees, fines, a big part of it. Other, and people often say, well, what's in other? And so I decided to break that out, including other, other.
So what's in other, other?
Well, other, actually. And I suppose we can find that if we have the list there, but... And unallocated free cash, that is money that's basically allocated previous year, leftover hasn't been spent and is available to be spent. So the total for revenue for fiscal year seventeen, twenty-seventeen, is two hundred sixty-seven million dollars and some change. That's the source of all of the funds that are spent in both the school and the town budget. On the school budget, you voted for about a hundred and one million dollars and some change. And I apologize for talking about and some change when we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, and I'll clarify that in just a moment. But you voted a general appropriation. In addition, there are other sources of funds that are available to the school, tuitions and fees for a certain amount of non-resident students who are in school because they live in Brookline on a non-resident status, facility rentals, state circuit breaker funding for special education. By the way, that two million dollar number is meant to offset the, what, about forty million dollars that are spent on special ed. So we don't get quite enough reimbursement from the state. Revolving funds, reimbursement, small amount, other revenue, there's always an other. Grants, the school department does a very good job of bringing in grants, revolving funds. And then thirty-two million dollars, forty-nine, thirty-two million, four hundred ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars brought over from the town budget for, to pay for employee benefits and building maintenance, a bit more than one point three million dollars. And there are other unallocated costs, costs that are unallocated to the schools that would change that number a bit. But basically, that's an all-in number of the, for the total school, school operation cost. The fiscal year seventeen budget was different. It was a new format and a new administration. And there were some significant differences. The old format was three hundred and fifty-eight pages, double-sided, there it is, there's almost as much as my budget when it came over on. The program descriptions and budgets were listed separately. Program budgets were listed by account code number, in order of account code number, rather than by any kind of rational listing that is grouping K through A or grouping math or something of that sort. There were a number of reserves in the, in the budget. All-in costs were not provided at all. And benefits which equal approximately, employee benefits, equal approximately sixteen percent of all-in school costs were there, but only on the very last page, page three hundred fifty-eight. I'd like to take questions after well-done, if that's okay.
Can you just tell what all-in costs are?
Oh, I think, okay, all-in costs means the total cost of operating the system. So you've allocated to the town meeting a hundred and one million dollars, but the school department actually uses about a hundred and fifty million dollars, a hundred and fifty-two million dollars. If you were to try to, if you were to look at all of the costs, that's what I mean by all-in costs. Okay? And the hundred, a hundred and one million dollars that you've allocated are allocated to specific line items in the budgets. It's not like, it's not like there's no...
Yes.
Well, actually, there is a bit of money in the funds. It actually does go into the same pot in most cases. Beyond that, there was frankly a lack of transparency. And inquiries sometimes met with less than full information. And I think there's been a very significant change in that. And it's, it's felt by the advisory committee, I believe the board of selectmen feel the same way. I've talked to some department heads who have some shared funds, IT, for example, with, with the schools. And there's a general feeling that the school department has been treating the other town departments and other, other bodies, as, school committee as well, as being strategic partners, which is something that really helps enormously in analyzing the budget. And there's another difference that you saw at town meeting, which is that you have a deputy superintendent who wants to give you the right answer, the precise answer, rather than off the top of your head. And I think we're all used to having Peter Rowe answer a question by saying, oh, it's on page two ninety-six, which he was capable of doing, always stunned me because it was, or giving you an answer that was his best estimate. But we haven't had that. What we've had is somebody who wants to look up the number. And I think that's all to everybody's benefit ultimately. Program descriptions this year, accompanied program budgets, it was easy to see what the money was being spent on, how many staff were related to each program, what the program did, how it related to adjacent programs. Each program was listed with its related programs because that made it much easier to understand linkages. Precision of the placed reserves, with the exception of a special education reserve, I believe all of the other reserves were eliminated. And instead, the funds were allocated to the programs that they were going to support. There were still a couple of things that the advisory committee would like to see. We'd like to see the all-in costs put into the budget in some form. Currently, they are available in a report that the school department presents to the state. And this year was the first year in which that report was given to the advisory committee. And benefits are not yet incorporated into the summary or into the individual programs. And that's something that we're discussing, advisory committee's discussing, with the school department. That will take a little bit of work, and it may, it may require estimates instead of precision, which I think goes against the grain of the school department, which is probably a good thing. Preparing the budget, who does what? The town administrator and staff estimates the total revenue that starts in September, it's completed with some, some widdle room in January, February, because not all the numbers are known that soon, specifically state aid and insurance, health insurance costs. The school superintendent and staff estimates their needs beginning at the same time. It's a very substantial process on both sides. And this, this year in particular, because the school department went back to the very beginning and looked at the salary line for each individual staff member, for every teacher and every other staff member, rather than just looking at the, at the overall budget for the, for the program. It took more time and effort. Budget was a bit later than anybody would have liked. When the, those numbers are put together, the town-school partnership, and I'll describe that in more detail in a moment, divides the increase in revenue fifty-fifty between town and school and adjusts that, that framework to account for reality, like changes in enrollment. And that usually happens in mid-January or as soon as possible thereafter. And that is staff as superintendent, the town administrator, their immediate deputies, the board of select, representatives, the board of selectmen, the school committee, and the advisory committee. School committee then has line item control for the funds allocated to the schools. Their budget is completed late February, early March. The advisory committee reviews the town budget line by line in detail and the overall school budget. We do look at line items and ask questions about it. But our primary responsibility is to look at the overall budget and comment on some of the longer-term implications of that budget and the allocation between town and school. Because it's the school committee's responsibility to control the line items for the school budget. And then we make our report, it's in the combined reports. Town meeting then has line item approval for town funds and approval of authority for the overall school budget, and of course, that occurs in late May. So that's the process. Town-school partnership, after Proposition Two and a half passed, there was a cap on how much new money could be raised by a town through the real estate, through property taxes. An agreement was put in place as a way to avoid battles over allocating those capped funds from real estate taxes. And the agreement was to split new revenue fifty-fifty between town and school budgets with some exceptions and adjustments. And there is a detail, a written agreement that was signed, I think by Dick Lirion, goes back to nineteen eighty-two, eighty-one, eighty-three, something like that. It's a framework rather than a fixed formula. The town administrator and the school superintendent meet each year, they tweak the allocation, work with each other to divide up the pie. They sometimes have to follow the old Russian proverb, the shortage will be distributed among the peasants, at least they have to make do with what they've got. And they bring their proposal to a meeting of the town-school partnership committee. And this year, for example, the school department had, after it had done all of its work, came back into the town-school partnership meeting and said, well, we need another million and a half dollars. And the answer was, you have to find that within the school budget. And fortunately, there were some significant pieces of money that they were able to identify that closed that gap. The allocation is used to build, that comes out of that, is used to build both the town and school budgets and then final authority from the allocation belongs to town meeting. So as Dennis Spiegel said in his, in his discussion at town meeting, if town meeting wants to, we can change that allocation. I would say that you should only do that with great, great caution, unless you know all of the detail that's going into the, into both budgets. The advisory committee's view of the school budget is that the school budget should show all-in costs, all-out, all costs, even if they're estimates in some cases, as you might have, for example, between where IT money is actually spent, whether it's spent on the schools or spent, or spent on town for overall town infrastructure. Employee benefits should be allocated to each program, just like salaries are. That way, you and employees can see what the true cost of, of their true cost is to the town. And the annual report to the state does provide a baseline for allocating those shared costs. And it's a good, good template to use. The technology initiative in, as it was described in this year's budget, we felt needed to be strengthened, to be explained further, particularly with regard to the implications for what was going to happen in the classroom. It focused mostly on telling you what the money for the override was used for in purchasing software and hardware, as opposed to how it was going to impact the classroom. We'd like to see more discussion in the future about what happens in the classroom. The implications of the enrollment projection in the school budget are really very important, and they're the thing that I want to emphasize the most to you. The current level of programming cannot be sustained with, without, as you'd say, what a title that is.
Yeah.
Without, we didn't change that. Without an operating override, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, something of that sort. That's at least the, 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 the school budget subcommittee, the school subcommittee's view from the advisory committee's side. And the impact of forty B housing has been talked about. It needs to be factored in, but forty B isn't the end of residential development. It needs to be factored in, however, into plans for adding K through A classrooms and expanding the high school. And those are things that will come back to town meeting. You will see them in the future, and I hope you'll consider those aspects of the budget just as seriously as you consider how much money is being spent in math or whether a particular program or a particular technology initiative is appropriate in a particular year. Enrollment, salaries, and benefits drive the budget. Enrollment will increase at a rate of about three point four percent a year in the next five years, that's a projection. Salaries will increase about two percent a year, depending on labor contract, and reducing administrative time, which some of the, some of the teachers are, the teachers are asking for, may be a very good idea in order to increase their ability to teach in class, but it will increase costs if it requires hiring full-time equivalents. And each person, each new person hired, more or less costs about eighty thousand dollars a year, including benefits. Brookline pays eighty-three percent of the healthcare insurance costs for its employees, and those costs are rising at five to seven percent a year, faster than any other costs that the town faces. And most Massachusetts towns pay a bit less, most private sector employers, including the very large ones, tend to be very generous, pay substantially less. There is a squeeze coming in... There is a squeeze coming in 2017 to 2021, which is why I say that there will be a need for an override, an operating override in that 2019 to 2020 period. Town revenues increase about 3.4% a year. Total costs are going up about 4.2% a year. In combined fiscal year 2021, the annual shortfall will be about 4% of the annual budget, or about $10 million. After that, enrollment may begin to plateau. And the increase in revenue could more closely match the increase in cost, which it did for a great many years. But the scale and impact of residential development is a big unknown. Affordable housing is not the only kind of housing that's going to be built in Brookline. After 40B goes away, when we reach the 10% threshold, developers will not die. They will continue to find places to develop in Brookline. And they'll build new housing. And we'll have children entering the school, more children entering the school as a consequence. So again, you have to think beyond the immediate Hancock Village, for example, and think about the long-term implications of residential development. Issues for town meeting members to consider, and this is very much a personal view. One way to close the gap, that $10 million budget gap, is to add 10 new Brookline place size projects by 2021. That will close the gap completely by giving us enough revenue from commercial development so that we don't have a gap. That's not going to happen. So the ways that we can close the budget gap are limited. Overrides, reducing costs to efficiencies, although that's difficult when 81% of the cost in the schools is labor. So that leaves you 19% to play with. You can't really squeeze 10% of the total budget out of the 19% that's there. Or reducing programming, more kids per classroom, more hours per teacher, fewer ancillary services. And the general tenor of the town is, we don't want to do that. To keep services level, town meeting members really need to prepare themselves, yourselves, and your constituents for both operating and capital overrides. Operating override in 2019, 2020, something of that sort. One, and ultimately, I think, two new K-8s or the equivalent via expansion of existing schools and Brookline High School expansion and reconfiguration, or reconfiguration. So those are the things that I think are long-term issues that will come up in the next several years, which you really need to be prepared to address. And just one last personal note, consider the favorable impact on all of this of new commercial development. Okay, we're not going to have 10 new Brookline place size development, but any commercial development that we have reduces that gap somewhat. And by the way, some other favorite things as well, like increasing parking degrees, will also reduce the gap. Okay, we start there. Eric, do you want to have? Do you want, you want to have a question at the very end, is that?
If there are any questions that people have on what Mike has just presented, I think we can entertain them now.
Sure.
Regina Frosting from Precinct 16. If there were not to be an expansion of the high school by acquiring some other property in order to house students, how would that impact your presentation in terms of our deficit, our annual deficit?
It won't affect the deficit because there needs to be an increase in classroom capacity at the high school, whether it's on net or at 111 or up in the sky or somewhere else. I think Mary Ellen should address that in her presentation. Yeah?
The 32 million for employee benefits, is that all health or is it health and pension?
It's all benefits.
So he benefits in general?
All privileges, the totality of privileges.
So it's pension and health and other?
Sorry, yeah, workman's comp, unemployment, the whole, the whole package.
I guess I'm not making myself clear. I know that concludes everything.
Yeah.
But the major benefits that people get that are expensive are health and retirement. I was just asking, is most of this 32 million both retirement and health? Or is one of those missing?
No, retirement is not included in this.
Thank you.
Yeah. Significant, that is an all-in cost that needs to be, but it's not.
Just following up on Regina's question, I think. I've just gotten any from Precinct 10. You said there's a $10 million shortfall in the 2020 range. That's an operating shortfall? That doesn't include the capital expenditures for the new high school, the new elementary school and all that? That's just an operating shortfall? Is that right?
I believe, yes, that's correct.
Susan Granoff, Precinct 7. You mentioned in your presentation, Mike, that there's been an elimination of reserve funds in all but one category, across the board. Why was this done and what are the risks?
Well, good question. We had a lot of discussion about that. And it was done because what Mary Ellen did was to look at the categories that there were reserves for and very substantially sharpened the detail in what was likely to be spent. And so there's less, certainly much less risk than there would have been in prior budgets where there were some scientific wild ass guesses made about what should be spent or what would be spent in particular categories. The only reason for having a reserve for special education is that truly is an unknowable number. If you have one or two students move into the district who are eligible for a district placement, that can require quite a lot. Yes, sir.
Me?
You go. I think you have your.
I'm sorry, I'd like to keep track of who's given this done.
All right. The, you have the comparison of the FY16 format of the school budget and the FY17 format. It says FY16 format is 358 pages. FY17 format is 110 pages plus appendix. I hope that appendix isn't 248 pages.
Good question. It's about 60 or 70 pages.
That helps. I would like to know whether we can get copies of this to town meeting members early on before town meeting. Not a summary, the whole thing, just as we get the town administrator's budget request every year.
Mary Ellen will cover that.
Even if this is a thinner book now, that's fine, but we should all have it and be able to read it.
Yeah, Mary Ellen will cover that. I will say that for every one of those nice fat packets that get sent out to your first-class mail, it costs the town $7.
Yep.
So it would be great to have an up, out, I'll look at it online, a way of looking at the budget.
I admire that.
And I understand that.
Okay. George Abbott White, Precinct 9. Just a quick question. How many people on the advisory committee are teachers or have been schoolteachers?
Two or three, I know.
And how many are on the advisory committee?
Well, there are 30, there are 30 members at most. There are currently 28 here, is that right?
I think we'll be up to 30 at the beginning of the new fiscal year.
Some of them.
The moderator hasn't said he wants to reduce the size of the committee, but he's still not quite finished with making appointments for next year.
But I know we have at least two, Siska is a former teacher and.
Well, Chris has done some teaching, but she is not sure whether, and he was at the high school level.
Siska Humphrey.
Yeah, Siska Humphrey.
But Chris is high school.
And there's at least one of them.
Doesn't Chris teach now?
He was a teacher in Lexington and his name was.
School teacher.
Huh? Public school teacher.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Mary Ellen, Precinct 6. To be honest, I'm still trying to get my arms around this town-school partnership.
Yeah.
It, you know, it talks about a split of new revenue 50-50. I don't know what that means. Does it mean that the whole budget of the town is split 50-50?
Yeah.
And to what extent, and also, let me, I've got sort of more to ask. It also says, but then you look at things realistically. And so realistically, how often has the split to the schools been higher? And what items don't show up in the school budget, but they benefit the schools and they show up in the town budget?
Okay, there are two slightly separate questions.
So I'm trying to understand all of that.
So new revenue means the increase in town revenue from year to year, most of which is due to property taxes going up. Taxes go up 2.5%, plus there's new construction and so forth and so on. Ever, the town revenue for property tax was above 3.5%. Plus any increases in state aid and any of the other sources that are printed out there on that first page. I think it's page 2. That increment, that increase is allocated nominally by, the framework is to allocate that 50-50. That makes sense in a situation where you have static school enrollment, where you have rising school enrollment. Clearly, the needs of the schools are going to grow faster than the needs of the town, assuming that there's not something strange happening with an increase in cost on one side versus being different than the increase in cost on the other side. So where you have an increase in school enrollment, realistically, the town administrator and superintendent for years have sat down and said, well, okay, let's see how we can tweak this this year in order to give the schools what they need without squeezing the town budget too much. When the town budget gets squeezed beyond the point where the town administrator says, ouch, that's when you have an operating override. The second question is, what are some of the other costs? So there are a number of other departments that provide services to the town as a whole. And the shared services model is a very sensible one. For example, IT is the one that all these kinds of things divide and bleed. The IT department provides infrastructure for all of the, for the whole of Town Hall, for example, and for other facilities as well. Those costs are partially related to the schools, partially related to the town side. And that's an example of a shared cost. If you, if anybody has a copy of the combined reports, there is in the advisory committee's report a listing of what was given to the state for shared costs in 2018.
I'd like to, at this point, I think I'd like to make sure that Mary Ellen has a chance to talk to us about her contributions. And so we'll come back and we'll have questions after Mary Ellen's hesitation. I have to look.
Hi, I'm Mary Ellen Dunn, the Deputy Superintendent for Administration and Finance. On the back table were copies of this slide presentations. We're not going to go through all of it. Also was a copy, an additional copy of the town meeting presentation. And I need to extend my apologies. I was hoping to point five copies of the budget document for you. There are four in the back and they're arriving tomorrow. We got a little waylaid with graduation over the weekend. If you leave your name and address, we'll mail them out tomorrow to you, the full copy of the budget document that's online. So please feel free to leave your name and address so we can get that into the mail to you tomorrow. What I was asked to cover, we're going to cover the first two items. Included in your packet is information that has been presented on the night school and then some new, some information that will be presented for the high school renovation and expansion on June 13th at the high school. Just to get you up to speed and sort of what information is being shared around for the night school and the high school renovation and expansion. But I thought it would be helpful for town meeting members to understand sort of what the budget process is for the school department, at least the process that I follow, and what documents can be expected going forward. Because I threw a monkey wrench at you and provided a document at town meeting that maybe you weren't used to seeing or didn't anticipate seeing. So I appreciate the positive feedback that you liked it. That's fine interpreting what you've communicated. It's something I've always done with town meeting members. Our budget, school budgets are so large that it provides some level of context in addition to the advisory analysis. It provides a little bit more context for town meeting members to really understand what $151 million budget is and what's included and what our goals are. So our process is really very simply is that the school committee generates budget guidelines. Those are ready in September. Those are issued to what I call budget managers. Those are people in the school department that oversee and are responsible for spending money for such as if it's teaching and learning, technology, ELL, all the various subprograms that we have. We develop an operating calendar. The calendar is very similar that Mike already presented. Our calendar is that we start and send out budget information to the budget managers in September. We ask them to generate their requests during the month of October because they need to contact faculty and a variety of things within their buildings, within the programs. They submit that information to me on November 1st. And then through November 1st, that month of November, my team and I are generating our budget calculations. December 1st, the superintendent reviews the requests against the town partnership. So those meetings generally happen with the town administrator in November, December. In January, the timetable should be that the superintendent presents a budget recommendation to school committee in January. The town has a bylaw that February 15th, the town's financial plan is presented to the board of selectmen and that is to be complete. So our goal for school committee is that our budget deliberations are pretty much finalized and complete to meet that town administrator's deadline. January, February timeframe, we always have public hearings and there's always a capital request supplement. And so that supplement can include, as you'll see, as I talk about the capital plan calendar, park and rec, DPW, building department, any of the departments that have projects that are going to benefit the schools. We would want to make sure are included and that the school committee is aware that those requests are coming forward. And then March, which is a, we may have an adjustment that will be made. And generally, that's because in March timeframe, the state's, the legislature's budget comes out, GIC, health insurance information comes out, rates come out, and there may be an adjustment at that point. So on our timetable added for next year, April and May will have, I would like to see us actually have an information session, host an information session for town meeting members, the association before town meeting, so that we can provide you with the budget document, we can provide you with information and opportunity to ask questions ahead of town meetings. So it's, we're proactive in sharing of information, as well as also some questions about capital, particularly because the night school and the high school expansion is going to become a very prominent part of the community discussion. Our capital budget calendar, and I apologize for the size of the type, is we re-formatted this year. Generally, the school department did not start their capital planning process until September. That's actually too late. We're modeling ourselves after the parks, parks commission process. And so we can, it's very easy that planning department may have a project that involves the school department, building department, parks and recreation, DPW, transportation board, board of health. All of those potentially have capital requests that would impact the schools or we would need to partner with them in what that project would be. So we would really want to start that process in January in terms of what is on the horizon. So while we're finishing up 17, we're actually starting to look at what we need to do for 18 and plan for 18 because in September, in just a couple of months, we need to actually have capital requests ready for the FY18 budget. And our calendar goes through, including our municipal partners at some checkpoints throughout that. And including sort of at the end, monitoring reports, also including monitoring reports where the school committee has a capital subcommittee that meets monthly and to provide regular reports and updates on any of the capital projects that benefit the school district for their information and keep them informed. The one thing we're going to be adding, I haven't tucked in under capital, but we'll be starting to do a formal enrollment report. So one of the pieces of Brookline that I have found is that there is not a formal enrollment report. And many, a lot of interest in enrollment, a lot of interest in some subsidiary tables in enrollment analysis, but there's no one place to go find all of that information annually. So part of what will be issued hopefully this November is a formal. So, part of what will be issued, hopefully this November, is a formal enrollment report so that that will be available online and will also be available for both the school department as well as other departments to use for planning purposes for an updated enrollment projection every year. So, that's our budget process. It's pretty inclusive, it's pretty compressed. We do, in terms of explaining what Mike was talking about in terms of precision, is that one of the pieces in terms of why this year's budget document took a little bit longer is I reconciled our budget requests against the FY sixteen budget. And in the budget document, you'll notice a lot of detail about shifts, or not shifts, but corrections or changes. So, for example, if a department had ten FTE budgeted and I ran a report and there weren't ten FTE, you might see a minus one, and explaining that that one FTE wasn't there. But in another department, you might see there were nine FTEs and then now there are ten, is that we added one FTE. So, in net, our FTEs were in balance. There's a, we also found there are approximately eight point two-five pieces and parts of FTEs across the entire budget that had not been part of the FY sixteen budget. So, we reconciled from payroll to budget to make sure that we are being transparent and clear about how many FTEs that we have and what changes happened during, from one fiscal year and during a fiscal year, and declare those additional FTEs that weren't part of the original budget document as part of the next year's budgeted budget document. So, we're never, so that you can go from budget to budget and see all the changes of FTEs and where they are and where they're going because that's eighty percent, eighty-five percent of our operating budget is in labor. And we need to make sure that we keep track of where those FTEs are and are they being budgeted appropriately and correctly by program. The other change we made, as Mike also talked about, is in looking at the budget document, it's organized how we are, how we are organized as an organization. So, you'll find all the departments that are under teaching and learning, all under teaching and learning. You'll find all the special education, our student services departments under student services. And then you kind of have a context about what is student services, what does it offer? Student services is not special education. It's actually nursing, guidance, special education, and other student supports. So, that is helpful for you to know and have some context rather than the account order, which you'd have special ed in one place and you'd have nurses in another place, and they weren't in a logical order. It modeled, the order actually models the state reporting requirements that we have. So, the more that we can standardize on how we report to the state, the more consistent information if somebody wants to check our costs for administration, they should be able to look at our budget document and then also look at the state, what's reported on the state, and actually have those numbers match pretty close together. So, some of it is to add structure, some of it is to add, actually add understanding and context for what the departments are actually doing, what's under teaching and learning, what is under student services, and the like. So, with that, any questions before I hand it off to Joe to go over our enrollment?
So, you mentioned the state website. Is that a place a person could go and see how our costs of various kinds of aspects like administration compare to other schools?
Yes. It'll be probably a year to two-year lag because they only post the year when they have all the cities and towns' end-of-year financial reports submitted and the analysis and all the data's ready. So, sometimes, like right now, I think they're up to fiscal year fourteen. Fiscal year fifteen's not yet posted. So, there's still a lot of time.
If you could maybe include that sort of information in the annual report and the budget, information we provide to the public.
Information specifically.
About comparison to other school districts and various kinds of costs.
So, we first have to agree on what school districts we're going to compare ourselves to. So, I'm not sure I've come across a standard list.
We do have a standard list of towns. Do you stand for standard list?
He's stating that there used to be a standard list of towns. So, that's the first point, is to agree on what towns we're going to compare ourselves to and how we're going to compare ourselves. So, that, and that will be up to the school committee to decide what they would like to, if they'd like to have that information presented. The other part of the budget document that I have put out on a response to information is that in the FY eighteen budget, there will be more information similar to the operating budget programs for each of our grants and revolving funds, describing what they are, what the restrictions are for those funding, those funds. And in addition to a sort of shared services section, because there, while that information is actually carved out in the town's financial plan under various departments, it would be nice if it was sort of all in one place, both for myself and school committee, but also you as town meeting members, and saying, here's where the technology department is, here's where parks is, here's what rec has, here's where what DPW has. Because it is, some of that is carved out. So, where it is already carved out is to sort of take that, work with Melissa and take that and kind of create a summary of a shared services section. So, that will also be something we'll be working on.
Hi, Jane Gilman. I don't want to take time away from the enrollment projections, but I do have questions about the budget things I didn't understand, and I don't know when to ask them.
Ask the left of the enrollment, maybe?
Three things very quickly. Special ed, out placements, and grants. I haven't had a chance to really pull those out. I assume you're tracking those over a period of time? Or, I'm just thinking, from the standpoint of town meeting members, some of my constituents would want to say, where are we on special ed? Because this is a draw for the community. Is there, has this increased? And if so, by how much? I assume it has. Placements, I take it, has gone down, but I don't know. But there, as you mentioned, those are very, very, very expensive. In Newton, they were off the walls and out of control, and they sort of came back in. Third thing is, my sense historically is that Brookline schools have done very well in terms of grants. And I'm just curious whether that's still the case the last few years.
So, the first part is, special ed and the grant piece will be improving the reporting and trying to show more historic information.
Good, good.
Because it's helpful to know sort of where we've been and where we're.
Right, and also how we might be able to support that.
Well, and also the concern I have is that, do we, are we in a, are we in a dip and leveling off, or are we going to see ourselves sort of rising back? Because as our enrollment rises and as attractive as Massachusetts is, we have a number of people still moving into the community, and so we need to pay atten, just like our enrollment for, our overall enrollment, we need to pay attention to. Also, we need to be mindful and have some, maintain some level of historic context for our special education, as well as our circuit breaker reimbursements and filings. So, in my last district, about three years ago, we, had we not been paying attention to how we were doing reimbursements and when we were doing reimbursements, we almost left about eight hundred to nine hundred thousand dollars on the table because in-district costs were, are eligible. And a lot of people assume that in, because in-district is generally less expensive, they don't think that we can actually claim for it. So, that's a piece where we need to be monitoring what are our in-district reimbursement costs that we're eligible for because I want seventy-five percent of, I want every penny I can get from the state. And so, I need to make sure that we're actually tracking and make, and we don't assume just because they're less expensive that we're not making a claim. I'll throw jello against the wall and see if it sticks because a thousand dollars is a thousand dollars more than I had yesterday. So, that, and that thousand dollar student will turn into a fifteen thousand dollar student for the reimbursement because as the, as their needs progress, potentially their costs progress. And, or if I have ten students at a thousand dollars, that's ten, that's, you know, I'm going to go after the pennies. The, so that will be, we'll be working on that to improve that. So, you'll see, I appreciate and I welcome feedback and questions and look at how can I respond to those in the future in terms of making it an accessible budget document so the community understands what's included in the school department budget. And the third one.
Grants.
Grants, grants, our, Brookline is not necessarily one that we're going to be competitive in the grant world. A lot of our grants are entitlement grants. Of concern particularly, and has been of concern for many districts, is the kindergarten enhancement grant. There's a number of different opinions about the purpose of that grant. So, Medco is also one that, at the state legislature, goes through a variety of different discussions on a cyclical basis. Generally, because of our size, you know, our grant population as such. With regards to revolving funds and fees, we're still trying to implement the fee collecting position and really are looking at fees in terms of are we collecting what we're charging? Do we have the appropriate policies in place to collect what we should be charging? So, some of that's just process and program review. And I know that rental facilities was a question in the override, and just really making sure that what the town's intentions and what their goals and expectations are, that we're able to respond to those efficiently, effectively, and as transparent as possible.
Is there a statement that we can get on just what fees are now in place at, say, lower school and maybe at the high school?
Next year.
Okay.
You'll see it.
Okay.
Generally, I'm used to producing a fee table that school committee would vote what those fees are. We didn't increase any of those fees or change any of those fees this year, but there's usually, should be a fee table of what that is, and then behind that, an explanation and five-year history.
I just have a concern with fees in general for public school.
If I share that concern.
Great.
And, there was another question?
Yeah, I'm interested in diversity statistics. Is there a place where we get information about the diversities breakdown in our schools and how detailed are these? Does it include not just racial, but also economic?
So, would that be students or employees?
Students as, you know, as a start and possibly also starting.
So, more than likely, that will show up in our formal enrollment report because the demographics of our students, as well as the popular number of our students and projection of our students, that will be included in that report.
But we don't have it currently?
We don't produce it in a format that would be helpful at this point. We, you know, I think it's, part of it is it's a valuable piece of information that people want to know, and it needs to have the same, it needs to be in context with what our enrollment projections are.
So, when will we be starting to get that?
November of this year.
Okay. And in line with that, I've noticed that there are special programs such as the African-Americans and Latino Scholars Program and the Calculus Project that are geared for certain, I guess, racial groupings, like students. What kind of use are the, is it being put to? How, what kind of enrollments do these programs have?
They're real, they're pretty popular, they're well-attended, and part of that information we're going to be, that's how we're going to improve part of our descriptions next year is, sort of what, what is the utilization of the services that we're providing and do have that data. So that we have, there's a cost, and what the cost is of providing a program as well.
And perhaps also the percentage utilization of the eligible population?
Those are all things that we will be working on to improve the information. So, it will take some time. We're not going to hit all things at once, as I did this year, but I think I'm more than happy to hear the questions and more than happy to figure out how do we respond to those questions and so that the school budget is as transparent and understandable and accessible as possible.
Before you move on, or?
I just, maybe responding to George's question about special ed, I think this is one of our very, very successful management programs in schools. We have twelve hundred and seventy-six students, pre-K to K-12, that are on IEPs. That's about sixteen percent of our student population, which is just about the state average. The state is right now between sixteen and eighteen percent. So, right about the state average of kids that are on IEPs. And off that, forty-nine are in outside placements. Now, that is dramatically less than most school systems.
Could you define the initials you just gave? Not everybody's.
Individually, individual education plans. Each child has an IEP. But if they're, if their father has special needs, we develop a plan for that child. Each child has his own individual plan. Sometimes we find that our, within the school system, we can't meet the child's needs, so that becomes an outside placement. There are collaborators we go on to that try to provide the service in a least costly, in a least costly manner. There's also many private placements. Totally, we have forty-nine of our students outside, which is dramatically lower than most school systems, smaller than us. We also have a outstanding BEAP program, early childhood program. Our early childhood program, preschool program, is an integrated preschool. We have by law an obligation to educate three- and four-year-old children with special needs. If you did that on a individual basis, it'd be very, very costly. So, what Brookline has done, they have developed a preschool program, an integrated preschool program where up to forty-nine percent of a class of fifteen can be special needs child, and the others, they have to be typically developing students. So, roughly for a class of fifteen, you're going to have no more than seven special needs students and nine regular students, eight or nine. We have a total of ninety-two students in Brookline in our preschool program with special needs. The other students, the typically developing students, pay a tuition. So, this tuition does, it helps generate revenue that Mike spoke about. It helps to offset the costs of educating these kids, all right? But the most important thing is, research indicates that the best way to teach a child is in a, in a classroom setting, not isolated. So, we're providing the best educational setting for these kids, we're generating additional revenue, and we're meeting the needs of these kids in a very, very high-quality manner. So, I think one of, one of our most successful programs are special education and a preschool program. I'm glad George asked that question. On the enrollments, what I'd like to do with the enrollments is move to slide eleven. This is our enrollment projection that Mary Ellen was talking about. Starting next November, we plan to do this every year. It's on that, your PowerPoint slide, page eleven. You don't need to see it, that's what I'm going to tell you. October first of every year, the enrollment you have in the schools, October first, every year, becomes your official enrollment for the year. As you know, the enrollment changes every year. So, the October one count is the count we use each year. So, as of early October, every year, we will do an enrollment cohort study. We'll look at our projected enrollment. You do that by going back to the prior ten years. The prior ten years will develop trends. If you had a hundred students in kindergarten one year, and you have a hundred and ten in first grade the next year, then you had a ten percent increase. And you develop projected increases by grade level, from eight to one, one to two, two to three, and so on and so forth. And that helps you, those projections help you identify what the future enrollments will be five to ten years up. Now, this is going to work if everything stays the same. But in Brookline, as you've already mentioned today, and Mike highlighted, that's not the case. We do have new development. We do have forty BEAP projects that are changing the enrollment conditions in Brookline. So, what we do, we first look at the trends. We develop our percentage, percentages, we project the increases to be. But we then will look at the new developments, and we will actually add students to this projection based on the new developments that are online, are already in the pipeline. So, the, this year's enrollment numbers were based on the projects we knew existed this time last October. This next October, we'll look at the additional projects that are already going to approve in the pipeline, and we'll also make an adjustment. So, the numbers we're projecting for the future years that are helping drive our need for nine- So the, the numbers we're projecting for the future years that are helping drive our need for a ninth school and a 10th school is based on these projections as well as new construction. I wanted to point that out to you, and that's what Mary Ellen was talking about. Many times, school systems will contract out for this work. We find it's much better if you do it every year yourself, you really become very good at projecting the enrollments and you really, you know your town better than an outside contractor. And so you can, you can account for these new developments. That's what we're doing. So based on those projections, here's what's happened in Brookline the last few years and what we think is going to happen the next few years. This first column here is K-8. You can see five years, this is five years back, this is five years forward. In the last five years, our K-8 enrollment has increased by 814 students. We've gone from 4,652 to this year, 5,466 on October 1, all right? Looking at our projections, the next five years, we're projecting that 5,466 will be as much as 6,193 in 2021, an increase of 727 students. So between the 800 and the 700, we will have increased our K-8 enrollment in 10 years. 10 years back, 10 years forward, by about 1,500 students. That's like adding the devotion school in the large school in 10 years. It's a very, very dramatic increase. Now, you're looking at the high school, it's not quite as dramatic. In the last five years, the high school enrollment has only gone up 220 students. But the next five years, it's projected to grow up another 451 students for a total increase of 671, which is what we're projecting our high school expansion on. Looking at the K-12 enrollment, think about this. In the five years back, five years forward, we're projecting an increase of over 2,000 students. So that's, that's dramatic. In most, many school systems in Massachusetts, they're experiencing declining enrollment. Some school systems are experiencing slight enrollment increase. Brookline is one of those few communities that is experiencing a dramatic enrollment increase. And before we move forward, I want to point out one more thing to you. This year, these are this year's numbers right here. These, this year's numbers, we have a class, average class size in K-8 and also the high school of 21 students to a class. We have 259 kindergarten, K-8 classrooms in Brookline this year. And the average of those 259 classrooms in the eight schools is 21 children to a class. We only have seven classes this year that are over 25. That's because in Brookline, as I mentioned at town meeting last week, we use the buffer zone approach, which is a very, very successful strategy. By, we don't have rigid boundary lines. With two or three of the schools that are closer together, we have soft boundary lines so we can balance the enrollments from school to school. That has worked very, very effectively here in Brookline for many years. The fact that we can come very close to 21 in every class, we don't have, you know, 29s and 15s. If you look at our 259 classes, they're all very close to the height, maybe 19 to 22, 23 kids. And only, as I said, only seven classes that are over 25.
Dr. Conley, just a quick question, those seven classes, are those AP classes?
No, these are, these are K-8 classrooms.
K-8, okay.
Tevere Street School classes.
All right.
In our K-8 schools, all right? Now, if we don't build a ninth school, all right? Our projected numbers five years out will change this to close to 70 classes. We'll have, we'll have close to 70 classes above 25. That's how important it is to aggressively tackle that ninth school need right now. So within five years, we'll have that school online. Looking at the next page. There it is. This, this is this year's enrollment. So here's our K-8, K-12 enrollment this year. And you can see in the lower grades, we're averaging, well into the 600s. We have some pushing 704, 696, 622, 633. Clearly, through about grade six, we're well into the 600s per grade here in Brookline, total enrollment per grade. You can see at the high school, we're still in the 400s and the low 500s. So we're averaging about 490 in the high school grades, we're averaging 651 in the elementary grades. This past Sunday, we graduated 459 seniors. It was a lovely graduation, it lasted about two hours, we beat the rain, which was fantastic. But those 259 kids are going to be replaced next September with, we're projecting about 650 kindergarten children. So that's what's happening each year. We're increasing it by about 200 students. Just looking at the outgoing senior class, the incoming kindergarten class. Mike mentioned that enrollment's increasing by about 3 or 4% per year. You think about, here we are, and in that, 7,000 to 8,000 students. So every 1% is maybe 75 students. And so about 3% is just realized between kindergarten and 12th grade. So clearly, this is a major driving force for our enrollment increase. Now, if you go back, if you think these 600s, three or four years, yes.
Correct. That chart, it would be more informative, I think, if you started with the bottom line is zero. Because it's, it's a misleading chart. It makes it look, the increase is dramatically not without distorting it by starting it at 300.
Well, it's actually real numbers.
No, I understand, but if the length of the blue lines is misleading, it looks like the increase is even more dramatic than it is.
Okay. But let's just look at the real numbers, all right? If we're averaging 651 here, these 600s now, in three or four years, we now move on and they're in the high, these kids are already here. And if they move on to the high school, the high school in three or four years, grades nine, 10, 11, and 12 will have 600 students.
I understand, I'm simply criticizing my drawing of the chart.
I, yes, I realize, thank you. So clearly, that's why we're talking the high school will easily be, within three or four years, up to 2,400, maybe 25, 26, 2700 depending on the actual number. So that, that generates the need for the, for the high school expansion and the ninth grade expansion. Yes.
With your experience across many systems, I'm wondering how many other systems have a building like our old Lincoln that we have kept for swing space? I'm wondering how much of a luxury that is when we look at the budget and contemplate building a new high school addition or a new elementary school. It seems to be a sacred cow here, and I just wonder what your experience is.
Well, my experience is you were so lucky to have the old Lincoln School. Not many school systems have a school that size, that has 25 to 30 classrooms.
I understand, so what my question really is, what do other systems do? My kids went to school in Newton, we did not have swing space, we did other things. So this old Lincoln School has been set aside for contingencies, for overflow, for construction and so forth. And that's a great luxury. That's really my question is.
What other schools do is they, they create modular villages. David Pollak and I and a few other county administrators visited a school in Westford this past summer. They had a modular village of classrooms, 30 or 40 modulars together. Very, very expensive to operate and purchase. What other people, other schools do, they'll actually develop, if they're expanding a program, they'll do it with the kids still in school. And that makes, makes a very complicated construction project, renovation project, and then it expands the cost of it.
And it's very expensive.
Very expensive.
And, and if you could, having been through three of those in Newton in 40 years, I can say having Lincoln is the luckiest thing in the world. In terms of money and in terms of disruption to its lives. So many of the projects in Newton were done with kids in place, and that was a nightmare. And a lot of the construction, I'm sorry to say, was not very good.
For example, I was the principal of the Runcle School, we started the Runcle Project a number of years ago, 2008. And because we were able to move all the kids off-site to the old Lincoln School, we completed that project in two years. The devotion project, which is about to start, was initially anticipated to take 45 months to complete. Very, very expensive to do construction in 45 months, just with the cost of escalation and construction cost. Because we found this 30 Webster Street, we were able to move higher population to a rental space in Coolidge Quana in grades five to eight to the old Lincoln School. We've now reduced that construction timeline from 45 months to 25 months. So it's been a huge savings. But also, the kids are in a school environment that's less disruptive, it's safer, and so it's a win-win. We're saving the construction cost, we're also providing the kids with a better educational experience during that construction period.
Could I ask one more question? I want to go back to the town-school partnership and the budget allocation. It says there's a town-school partnership committee, and I'd like to know who's on that and what the, you know, what their charge is. And my second question is, it was only when we were at town meeting that I understood that 59% of our municipal budget goes to the school. Department plus other things that have been raised here tonight. So I'm wondering, how did we get from the 50-50 allocation up to almost 60% and more when you account for other things that we do for the school system?
Okay, so the council partnership committee, I'm opening it. And the members are the superintendent of schools, the town administrator, the deputy superintendent for administration finance, Mary Ellen. Melissa Goff, who's the deputy town administrator. And then chairman of board selection and one of the selectmen. Chairman of the school, chairperson of the school committee, and one of the school committee member, Sean, as the chair of the advisory committee and the chair of the school subcommittee of advisors. And then other staff people commenting and providing assistance. The 50-50 allocation didn't get distorted to 60-40. Don't forget, there was a baseline budget in 1984 of some sort that allocated money between the town and the school. So whatever has happened since 1984, and free whenever that agreement was put in place, is the result of the 50-50 plus of adjustments along the way. What was there previously is, was the result of the fact that the school committee had statutory authority to tell town meeting what it wanted for money.
Can I elaborate on that? Because this comes up all the time and it's confusing. There are a couple of steps, and I'm trying to give you the independent perspective is how I understand it. First, the 58 or 59% figure is a little bit misleading because that's not what we call the school budget that comes through the town-school partnership process. The money that comes through the town-school partnership process, that's the school budget, is closer to about $101 million or 40, 42% of the total Brookline appropriated budget. The additional money that we keep putting into that 58% is money spent on behalf of the schools by other departments, IT, building, public works, legal, and benefits costs as well. But that doesn't yet come through the 50-50 split of new revenue from the town-school partnership. We voted, but we don't vote it under the heading "school budget." And it is actually less than 50% of the total budget. So you could say that the 50-50 split will eventually push up that 42% to a higher figure. It probably will, but what will push up that 40% figure or higher figure faster is the fact that the 50-50 split is after the schools are already given their share of, say, the most recent override, which was 100% of that override. So even that 50-50 split of new revenue is a little bit misleading because there's some new revenue, that's when we have an override, that's dedicated entirely to the schools. And to make that a little bit more complicated, there's other new revenue that goes entirely to the schools. As part of the override package of 2015, another million or so in new revenue was allocated entirely to the schools instead of being split 50-50. And most of that will come from parking meter hikes, just in simple math, there's some other. And over the years, at various times, there have been deviations in a given year from the town-school 50-50 split. But that 50-50 only applies after you've already taken out things that go to the schools in their entirety, like the override. I don't have time to explain the other little adjustments, and I don't know them well enough to explain them fully. But before we do that 50-50, 50-50 split, we also give the schools money to take into account special education costs and enrollment increases. So you might have $10 million of new revenue over and above the previous year's revenue, but you'll take some off the top, and then the rest will get split 50-50. And off the top will come override adjustments for fixed costs and... It's a long calculation, but eventually you get to a number, say 7 million, that will go 3.5, 3.5 to each after you've done that. But it's not a situation where we have a 50-50 split and more than 50% going to the schools because the school budget, as I said, is actually closer to 40% than 58%. It's just the all-in costs, as Mike called them, push it up to that 58% figure.
So when you recover from town meeting, could you put that in writing, bullet point? Because I, that's a lot of information, I wasn't taking notes, it would be helpful.
We will certainly try to explain that even more clearly than we have in the past in the advisory committee's report on the school budget.
Okay.
But it gets pretty arcane, if you can imagine, when you look at, what are the true costs of the schools to Brookline? Should we take the town administrators' days spent going to town-school partnership meetings? How much time did the town, did town council spend on cases related to the schools? How many hours did the advisory committee spend looking at the school budget, you know?
And we're.
We do have some administrative support costs, but you can really get down into the weeds and it's, it's not easy to say it's exactly this much. Public works plowed the sidewalks in front of the schools very, very well, much better than the sidewalks in front of your house probably. But, you know, that's, you know, benefits for schools, but it's towns spending.
The good news is, at the end of the year, July 1, fiscal year, there's an end-of-the-year report that's submitted at the Department of Revenue that identifies all those costs as school costs. It's called, it's called Schedule 19. Melissa and Mary Ellen sit down and they do a very, very detailed report. And we attempt to identify all those costs that may be in the town-side budget that are actually spent on the schools, and it's split to the state as real true school costs.
And those allocated costs actually have to be agreed to by the department of elementary and secondary education? So the town is supposed to actually have a memorandum of agreement about what the charge-offs will be to support schools? So that, that document should probably be updated and revised and will probably tell some of the questionnaires what the all-in costs are for the schools.
I think we, we should be able to recognize that we have a tremendous amount of talent and knowledge that surrounds our school budgets and everything else. I don't want to run into the same problem here tonight that we ran into at town meeting. I'd like to be able to finish what we need to do tonight without continuing to another evening. So I would like to extend a strong thank, voice of thanks. I'll have to do this again. Okay. One thing, for the people, I want to make sure that you have the opportunity to get the budget information from the school committee. If you want them, there's a sign-up sheet in the back, and you can get all that information. And we'll be available to you tomorrow and, you know, we'll all, we'll all have a lot more numbers than you know what to do with. Okay, I'd like to continue the, continue our meeting here of the TMMA. We'll call to order the business meeting. And you all have. And you all have in front of you, or at least I hope you all have the minutes from the previous meeting?
Yes, they're...
If you took it off... If you have the agenda, if you have the agenda, it's right after the agenda. The agenda was on the table in front there. Yeah.
Can I ask somebody to make sure I get this tomorrow?
Yes, yes.
Are you still in the meeting?
Okay.
Do I have to volunteer?
Yeah, I'll take care of it.
Okay, great.
Okay, so you have some minutes there that was prepared by our pro-town correspondent secretary, which I'm deeply grateful. That's Heather, by the way, Heather Hamilton. Anybody wish to make comments on that, or? Very detailed. Can I, can I entertain a motion? Do we have it accepted?
The move.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions. Good, okay. The next item we have is a treasurer's report. Susan Cullen. Mike, you have one?
Yes, at the moment, we have seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and forty-two cents in our budget. Not counting the money we collected tonight, which I...
So after tonight, we have about fifteen hundred? Thank you all very much for your contributions. It was a very full box over there. We appreciate all your, your support of the group. The next item on the list is the election of officers. And I'm going to take them in the order that they appear in the agenda. What they are, the people who have, the nominating committee has identified the individuals who will run first. And we have nominated for president Heather Hamilton. And she's, she's going to raise her hand over here. Do we have, I guess, you know, we'll, I'll accept a motion for a ballot, one ballot to support Heather? Okay, very good. That's, so Heather will be, we will have, the group will be put in good hands with Heather. We have a lot of, a lot of interesting projects that we'll work on over the next year. You have the support of the, many of the members here and the existing officers. So we thank you for taking on this.
Thank you very much.
For treasurer, we have Susan Cullen has been nominated. And I'll accept a ballot for an open ballot for Susan to be elected treasurer. Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Susan. Corresponding secretary, we have a very strong attendance here tonight because of the person that is currently serving as corresponding secretary. He really knows how to get us to come to these meetings, I would say. Harry Friedman has been nominated the corresponding secretary. I'll accept a motion.
The move.
Second?
Second.
And all, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
It passes. Okay, the next one. The next person on the list, the next office, is recording secretary. And the nominating committee did not have anybody come forward to be recording secretary. So that means that we open up the nominations to the people on the floor. I would ask first, is there anybody that's interested in being recording secretary? They take care of the minutes and all that sort of stuff. Or is there somebody that you wish to target? Okay, seeing no, seeing no action along those lines, I will put myself up for recording secretary.
Okay.
Very generous.
And is anybody that wishes to oppose that? I'd be more than...
We'll stifle them.
Okay, can I hear a motion for recording secretary?
The move.
Second?
Second.
And opposed, in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Now, we have the same situation for vice president. No one has come forward to be, to want to be vice president. It's an important job, as far as I'm concerned. But we would like to see somebody just say that they would like to serve as vice president. The, to serve in lieu of, in case the president is unable to attend or wishes not to. But basically provide support to the board. And so if there's somebody that would like to be vice president, it's not a, it's not a hugely taxing function. George?
I like the not very taxing function to work.
Okay. Is there anyone?
No, me.
Is there, are you volunteering?
I nominate George.
Second? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hiya.
Let's just cut that.
George doing it. There's something interesting about where George is sitting. Because I believe that that's the same place that Heather was sitting when we elected her vice president. So for next, next meeting, if you don't want to be selected vice president, don't sit there. Okay, thank you all very much. Now, the other thing, and I omitted to put it here, but it's really part of what we need to do is select representatives from each precinct. And I apologize for not including that here. And what we do, basically, is just kind of go down through the precincts, one to sixteen, figure out who's here or who would like to be named those precinct representatives. We are, we can select two from each precinct to be on the executive board. And these are the people that we certainly hope are going to be able to come to the meetings each month or whenever the meetings are called by the president. So we'll start with precinct one. Who do we have here right now?
Neil Gordon is representative precinct one, and there's a vacancy.
Okay. So Neil, do you wish to continue? I guess. Well, how many, how many ones? How many ones do we have here from precinct one? Two, at least I know.
Four.
Mark.
Yeah.
You don't have to raise your hand.
Yeah, unless I get bounced by somebody else, I'll stay.
Okay, all right. And I guess there are two precinct one, three precinct one people here? I'm sorry, I don't know.
Total four.
There's a total of four.
I'll have to identify them.
Neil, would you be able, would you be able to let me know who the second person would be?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
I think they're under the witness protection program.
Neil will let us know who the second person is?
We're supposed to know tonight. And if we don't know tonight, we're supposed to load them on the matter of need.
Okay, all right. So I guess we, according to our... Okay, number one person, another person from precinct one?
The volunteers? Can we ask for a volunteer? Military style.
Mr. Terrell? Terrell? Would you?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, precinct two. What do we have from precinct two? Anybody here?
Diana.
Diana? Okay. Diana is faithfully serving us as the Melissa manager along with... Probably direction. I'll give him direction to us. Anyone else from precinct two here?
Bruce Wolf is our current teacher.
Okay, all right. Why don't we elect Bruce? Number three, precinct three?
Currently, it's Patricia Connors and Dennis Wood.
Okay. Patricia, will you continue?
Yes.
Okay, and is there anyone else? Do you know Dennis Wood? Is there anyone else from three that would like to?
What about Heather? Jane?
Oh, Jane is from three.
Jane.
Jane?
Jane.
Okay, Jane.
Want to be precinct three?
I'm sorry, I can't.
All right. You've been very vocal during this meeting. Figured you'd be a good power for... Anyone else from three other than our president-elect? Okay, why don't we put Dennis down there for the, to continue? And he'll let us know if he can.
Four is currently John Mulhane, a vacancy.
Okay, John, you will continue? And is there anyone else here from four? Okay, then I guess we leave that one as a...
Can I kind of mention it to people? Can I, can I?
By, by all means, yeah.
I have a couple of people that I think are very good, but I want to ask them first.
Fair enough, okay. We can elect them on the, at the first meeting. Five?
Five is currently David Knight and a vacancy.
Anybody here from five? No? No one's here from five?
Just the vacancy.
And David Knight? David Knight is, is still a town meeting member, so we'll, we'll continue him. And we'll continue the vacancy. Six?
Six is Ruth Ann Snyder and Tommy Batolo.
No. He came for the cake.
There's still some food left here. Okay, do you two both continue to represent? Okay, precinct seven, we got a lot of sevens here.
Currently, Susan Granoff and technically Christopher Oates, although I don't think he ever quite...
No, I don't think he was here either. Susan, will you continue?
Yes.
And we have a couple of other sevens here. I recognize David. And Rita?
Rita.
Yeah, okay, we agree. Will you two want to fight it out?
You should try, because I come to the meeting anyway, so you should try it.
All right. Okay, sounds like, sounds like they've agreed that David will be...
What's the name?
David Knight.
Okay, eight, moving on to eight.
Eight, eight is currently Bob Miller and David Mackles. They're both here.
Any objections to either one of those?
The first one.
Huh?
Me, pretty objection.
Okay, nine?
Nine is currently Judy Vander Kaye, who said she would stay on, and a vacancy because George is moving up.
Okay.
I can't do both, right?
Not really.
Not really. Well, there we go.
What, anyone else from nine that's here?
Precedent.
No.
So what would he go to?
Okay. They, we'll have, we'll leave it as a vacancy. And David Mark, if you can find somebody to help you?
No. No, it's...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, pardon me. Okay.
Hannah Scott Anamian.
That's me.
Okay. Okay.
Anamian.
Okay.
I think they meet on Mondays, and I haven't used the seven months on Monday nights, so I can't break them.
Oh, we, that's not fixed, by the way. It's not, we have been meeting on Mondays. But the new president may have some other ideas. Okay, so we'll go with Scott and leave the vacancy.
Eleven is currently David Lescoye and Jennifer Goldstein.
Okay, David, will you continue? And anyone else that's here? Okay, we'll let her continue.
Okay.
Let her.
Twelve is currently Michael Burstein, and a vacancy.
Do we have twelves?
Joe.
Joe?
I'll do it.
Joe Ross?
Yeah, I don't know about Michael, but I can answer for him, but I'll do it.
Well, he'll, he'll continue too.
Joel Doran? Yeah.
Excellent, thank you, thank you, Joe, for coming back to town meeting.
Joe was a major contributor to the Town Meeting Handbook.
Yes, he is.
Which has slight revisions since then, but...
Yes, he, yes, he has. The town, the town moderator commented on how well he worked with Joe.
Then if anybody's new to Town Meeting, you're recommended Town Meeting Handbook.
Excellent, yes, definitely. Okay, that's twelve, we go on to thirteen?
Thirteen is currently Andy Fisher and Joanna Baker.
Okay.
They're doing a fine job.
Both very, very strong people. We'll continue them both as long as, if there's nobody here from thirteen. Okay, fourteen?
Fourteen hasn't had anybody since Shepherd Spunt died.
Oh, my God. Oh.
Long time.
Holy mother.
How long ago did we get?
She got a long time's tenure.
He was our first landlord, it's very good.
Anyone here from fourteen?
There's never anyone.
I can't find a way out of Spunt.
Is there a precinct fourteen?
All right, we'll leave those both vacant. We'll, we'll kind of, we'll kind of, you know, dig, dig around and see if we can find someone. We might ask Daniel Fishman. He's a new town meeting member.
Oh, he's in fourteen, isn't he?
Let's twist his arm. Target Daniel Fishman.
Contact him immediately.
He's new, he hasn't had a chance to see nobody.
Wants to be wanted, yes, yes.
Okay.
Fifteen is Kaya Van De Zeele and Robert Leal.
Okay, Kaya is here.
I can continue.
You can continue, okay. Anyone else here from?
We'll, we'll keep Robert.
Yes.
We'll keep Robert, then.
I agree.
If you're, if you're not here...
Sixteen is Regina Frawley and Sarah Lynn Alair, both of whom are here.
And they will both accept extensions. Thank you very much. Thank you all. Okay, we have just a couple of other things that I would like to mention. I had a conversation with the town clerk again today regarding the Town Meeting Members Handbook. And it's re, we want to reformat it into a way that puts the email address, the zip code, and all the other information about a particular town meeting member on the same page.
You mean the direct print, not the envelope?
The, yeah, right.
This, the green book, did you hear?
Yeah, the green book, that thing. And we'll, and what the, what the town meeting, the town clerk is a bit leery about is it getting to be, the print to be too small. I don't think it is. I think some of you have seen it, what I proposed. And I don't think it's too small, but he's, he's not so sure about it. So what he's going to do...
The page could be larger.
Yeah, why can't it just be like an eight and a half by eleven fold and a half? It doesn't have to be that size.
Well, that, that becomes cumbersome. But what, what he's going to do, what he's going to do, he's going to publish the book as it is now. And he's going to publish it, another version in the... and he's going to publish it, another version in the, in the portrait, in the, in the landscape orientation. So you'll be able to see side by side what it's doing.
Is he going to mail us one of each, or do we have to come into the town clerk's office?
No, you'll probably, he's, he said, I, he didn't say this, but I got the impression that he was going to mail out both. And they might not both come at the same time.
In late November.
Late November.
Can't we get it earlier than that?
Well, he's had a few elections this year to deal with.
Yeah, well, actually, after, after the, uh, July first, he should be able to send it out then, because the last people that are decided upon, that go in that booklet, is the advisory committee.
Right.
So, once the advisory committee is settled, then it should be, it should be mailable.
I haven't been part of these discussions, so I haven't followed the pros and cons, but personally, what I like to do if I want to see the whole array of names, is you download the spreadsheet from Town Hall, and then one can easily view portions of the spreadsheet, and each line in it has all the information about the meeting member.
Yeah, but not everyone wants to work with a spreadsheet either because of their own skill limitations or because they're not in front of a computer, the book is convenient anyways. But they might have a phone with them, but not a laptop or...
I, I find it easy to just take the book and use the book.
I usually use the book too. In fact, since they always send two, they always send two copies of the book, so I always keep one at home and take one into the office every time.
Oh, yeah.
Because sometimes things happen in the daytime.
Okay, so that's what's going to happen with that booklet. There was also some discussion about identification of petitioners on warrant articles. Um, and the moderator says, if everybody else, if nobody else has a problem with the identification, he doesn't have any. Town clerk basically said the same thing, which left us to the deputy town administrator. And there's where the rub is, because Melissa Goff is the one that has to collect the information, and she's a little bit unwilling. The proposal was, any town meeting member that proposes a warrant article would be identified as TMM seven, for example. So you know that those people are town meeting members, and if you want to communicate with them, you've got the listserv. Um, and the listserv will serve them. Now, this past meeting, we, this past town meeting member, we had a couple of, the smoking article was by a citizen who was not a town meeting member, and there were the Murphy brothers who submitted warrant articles, and at the time, neither one of them was a town meeting member. So they, they're, they're not easily communicate, communicatable to. Bad word, but anyway. Um, and the proposal had been to put their addresses and email addresses in the warrant, in the, uh, in the warrant article.
Whose proposal?
Mine, basically.
I second it.
Yes, yes, you have, you're very, I got support from you, which I really very much appreciate. Now, the, uh, the town, the, um, Melissa is, has reservations about giving out that information and publishing it. She says that it is in the, in the, um, communication to the selectmen at the time that they approve the warrant, and I didn't have an opportunity today, today to check that. But she says that it's there. Now, it may well be redacted, I don't know. But what she's going to do is basically, she's going to say, if anybody, if she's going to ask for the information from people who submit the, their warrant articles, if they're not town meeting members, and they should be identified as town meeting members. In this last warrant, I think you may remember that Frank Farlow was the only one that identified themselves as a town meeting member. And if you, any town meeting, or anybody who submits the, their material to the clerk and the deputy town administrator, if they put that information in the material that they submit, it will appear in the warrant article and the combined reports and that kind of...
Maybe they need a form that, that lists all those things, so they have to put that in?
Yeah, she, the, Melissa will ask for it, if they don't give it, then they're not going to, you know, it's no, no problem. But, yeah, she's going to worry, anybody that wants it, she says, have them call her. Now, that to me seems like an awful lot of work for her.
So what should we expect in the fall warrant? Like, when I get the warrant, it's Article fourteen, John Bassett proposing, you know, something amazing, and it'll say, John Bassett, Town Meeting Member, precinct six, and then when it's, you know, Joe Schmo, who's not a town meeting member, if Joe, is, is, is the new default that when Joe Schmo submits his warrant article, if he lists his address and email address, it will be included? If he doesn't, it won't be? Is that where we're at?
Basically, that's the way, that's the way it comes out. Somebody wants the information and it's not listed, they can call Melissa, and Melissa will give it to them or not, depending on the preference of the petitioner.
So, so she's collecting the information regardless, right?
Yes, she is, that's what she said.
And is it public information? If I come down to Town Hall, so what's her problem with putting it out there?
The address is, the email address is not our address.
Why not?
The email address has to be, because you have to be a registered voter to submit a warrant, but the email address would be public.
If it's filed with the town, it's a public record.
But the email address is not in the town census.
But Ernie, didn't you say that mailing address would be optional? I think Tommy's wife, the mailing address has to be open.
Well, it, the... The extent of optional is that it's going to appear in the combined reports and the warrant publicly.
If it's filed by Joe Smith, it might just check that you're a registered voter, Joe Smith. There might be more than one Joe Smith in town.
Right, right.
And that might not be in the record.
But they have to be registered voters, just a resident.
Two things come into mind. One, sort of sauce for the goose, sauce for the gander. If somebody is a town meeting member, you have that information, it's public sector, and you can get in touch with someone quite easily, you can communicate with them, you can make suggestions, you can ask questions. But you don't have that option if someone out of the blue just to name them. So it seems to me, just from the standpoint, providing additional, adequate information and a means of gaining it, and, and having reasonable communication with someone, the, the article that went up on the trees, I would have liked to have had kind of an exchange, and as it turned out, in precinct nine, we've got a lot of developers whacking them down. And it's, you know, that would have been an interesting conversation to have. So I don't see why it's a problem. If you're going to submit a warrant article, it should be, it's, it's...
We should be able to...
You should be able to get in touch with someone.
You shouldn't do it. You know, the little, the little book that we get seven months after the election, the town election, I'm going to keep saying that for fifteen years, I've been saying it. Maybe not everyone here knows, you have an option of not putting your personal information in there. Why can't whoever submits an article pro forma be told, would you like your information in there? So that people can reach out to that person and find out more about what they're proposing, for example. And they might say, no, I don't want it in there, but at least it is a public document.
I would just, I would add that, you know, for, for me, when it says John Bassett, Town Meeting Member six, I know I opened my pink book, or whatever it is.
Green this year.
Green this year, but next year, right. But, but, you know, as a constable, I post a warrant around town for people who aren't town meeting members. And for them, asking them to know to go to the Brookline Town Meeting website and then download the spreadsheet to get the contact information for us, also seems like a barrier. So if it's a good idea for to say, Joe Schmo, want to, allow it to say, one, one, Joe Schmo, 1-3 Main Street, 617, whatever, I think it should also say Tommy Vitolo, Town Meeting Member six, 153 University Road, and my phone number, not for the convenience of town meeting members, but for the convenience of non-town meeting members, who have just as much of a right to be involved in this public process, and we should be knocking down barriers for their inclusion to this process.
And if, if we want to go that way, and given the resistance that I've heard from the, um, from Melissa and company, it sounds like what we would need is a warrant.
No.
Well, I think you could say it's an optional.
We can take a vote right be here, say...
We have already voted that this is what we want. And it's a matter of, right now, it's a matter of, we, we don't have the authority, really. We don't publish the combined reports, and the, well, what we do is, we can make recommendations to those who do.
Will we take the vote, remember?
Yes.
Well, does, tell them about our vote, Steve.
We have, we have, and that's...
We want to see what happens, right?
Yeah, let's, let's make it official that we, this is what we want, and we've got time between now and the filing of any warrant article, if we have to.
Can't we just put it in the files, like a lot of other things?
That would be a warrant article, yeah.
Whose name would be on this warrant?
Regina.
No!
Oh, alright, sorry.
I, I think part of the problem is, is that when you submit a warrant article, there's no form.
Yeah, there should be.
Those do make it up yourself.
That's right.
You, you bring it to the sixth floor, they don't really tell you anything, except to bring it down to the clerk's office. They don't really tell you anything, except that they'll look over the names that you have. So I think a large part of the problem is that, as a, because I, because I filed a warrant article this past meeting, I didn't, I was going by memory. I couldn't really know what I was supposed to have, except I knew I needed ten signatures. There's no form, there's no nothing, there's no instructions, and...
It's in the Town Meeting Members handbook.
But if you're not a town meeting member...
But, but there's no form.
Harry, Harry, the clerk used to give out a little piece of paper with the instructions. He's not doing that now?
Maybe I needed to go to him first, but by the time I went to the clerk's office, I was coming with a completed thing, because I couldn't find, I didn't find any information.
You probably need a form, just like when you try to be a town meeting member, you get a form from the town clerk to say...
Well, I'm not aware that, I will check with the clerk next time to see if he has something, but I was also reminded by Ms. Frabley that they have to have this information, because when the selectmen review your warrant article, or re-review your warrant article, they're supposed to get in touch with you, and they need a way to do so.
The advisory committee also.
Yeah.
Um, can I respond to that, because it's important factual information?
Yeah, you were mentioned, so you can respond.
Um, Sean Jones, the advisory committee has affirmed, in generic terms, something Harry Booz had agreed with me, by agreement, oral gentleman person agreement, that even though under parliamentary procedure, normally you do not have to notify petitioners of a reconsideration, the formal vote of the advisory committee is that they now have that formal policy, same as Harry did, but it's been reaffirmed by, under Sean. However, not at the Board of Selectmen. So I reminded the new town at the time that he had an obligation, under Richard Keller's agreement, to give forty-eight hours' notice to any petitioner if there's going to be a reconsideration of the warrant article, because many, the warrant article petitioner, got a vote at one meeting, never to notice, and at another meeting it was reversed. And that's not fair, that's just not good policy. So, now that won't happen, with the rarest exceptions of an emergency, but it will at the Board of Selectmen, and in November and in May, the Board of Selectmen put on the agenda possible reconsideration of articles on the night of town meeting, but never named the articles, and I checked with all the petitioners, and they would never know the fact. So, hopefully, there will be a reaffirmation of the Keller policy and the Harry Booz policy, as Sean has affirmed. Hopefully, we can get this town administrator to, to be more consistent, because it does happen. They reverse the vote, and you look like a fool on the floor of town meeting, that's just not right. That's not what we're about to do.
So, I heard you, if, if, if I recall this correctly, that the moderator has no objection, the town clerk has no objection, those are elected officials. Um, let's not suggest that Melissa is the top of the food chain on the sixth floor. This is light lifting on, on her part. It's a generation she has anyway, to include it, and I, we've talked about this before, I don't care if it's in the warrant or the explanations, but to include it just makes sense. If someone, you have to be, as Thomas, you have to be a registered voter. You have to have a name and a mailing address. You don't actually have to have a home, but you have to, you have to have contact information. Nothing requires you to have a phone or an email address, if you don't want to give it out, you don't give it out. But, um, I'm, I'm not seeing the problem, and I'm more than happy to lobby the selectmen.
I think I do ask for a phone number or an email address when you file a warrant article.
I've been asked for that when I filed mine.
So I, I, I'm not hearing her pushback that, against, that, that they don't collect it, just the publication. And I can imagine some people might want to provide a phone number to the Board of Selectmen, who might not want it posted by Tommy, um, you know, in the library or, or, you know, in a public place. I might well want to create a separate email address that I use for some contentious article, that I may or may not want posted. So, so I think, I, I think it's important to distinguish, um, the, the optional nature of that, that publication. I, I don't think that anyone would have a problem with optionally posting it, allowing people to provide it who want to, um, so long, yeah, so long as it wasn't mandatory.
Yeah, they, they never was intended to be mandatory.
I think it should be mandatory. Reproposing an article, which could be a bio, which could be a rule, for the whole town. I don't think you have the rights to conceal your identity. I think any member of the public should be able to find out who proposed it, so.
Right, but the, I think the mandatory versus optional is telephone and email address.
Telephone.
Those have to be optional, because you need to...
Right.
But name and address, I, I think should not be optional, I think it should be required.
But you have to prove that you're registered, and also would distinguish you from someone with the same name.
Right.
In worst case, you can mail a personal letter.
Oh, yes, remember how to...
Right.
I think, first of all, I think that when that information is filed with the town, it is a public record.
Yes.
And they, there are public records, a lot, anybody can insist on seeing it. Uh, I think that, that certain information ought to be given to a citizen petitioner, and that ought to be one of the things, and based on what Tommy said before, I think that every citizen petitioner filing a warrant article should be told where to find the addresses of, uh, names and email addresses of all of the, of all of the town meeting members online. It's a simple URL to give, anyway.
What I'm, what I'm hearing is that basically, we want to say to these three individuals, the town clerk and deputy town administrator, that we want to require the information to be provided, and that I, you know, it really comes down to what, what we would say we wish to appear in the combined reports on the order.
I think just address, mailing address, I don't think it's right.
Ma, mailing address.
Phone number if they don't want it.
Okay.
I mean, the principle is, Tom was saying, it's, it's an open process, so any member of the public should be able to participate.
Well, it seems like there's consensus for name and address of all petitioners, town meeting member or non-town meeting member, to be required, to list the town, if they are a town meeting member, that they are a town meeting member, like TMM six or whatever, and then to have telephone and email address optional. The decision being the petitioner to include it on that document, and that applies both for town meeting members and for citizen non-town meeting members. I think that's the consensus.
If that's optional, how are they, how is anybody going to notify them of the hearings?
Well, I, my, my, my point is just, I should be able to provide a phone number to the Board of Selectmen that is not published, right? I know people who have various situations that they, you know...
Well, but if you provide a phone number to the Board of Selectmen, it is a public record.
Sure, and Joe, if you want to file a public records request to see the phone number of the person who doesn't want it published in the combined reports, you should feel free to do that. But for the folks who won't take that time, they won't see that phone number that the petitioner doesn't want to see the world to see, and I think that's a perfectly reasonable approach.
Okay, then, the other part of it is, you know, from my experience in filing a warrant article, it's like ping pong between the clerk's office and the Board of Selectmen, so... So if this is what it's going to be, there needs to be a form or something so that the people that go in there are asked the questions and the forms filled out.
And, and I think probably that form should include, by the way, here's where you put your signatures of people who are supporting the warrant article. So you don't have to create your own.
So you can have one under the line, required, optional.
Yeah. We can work on that soon on. David?
And along with the formality of that form regarding contact information, the, the instructions that Harry mentioned may or may not, I think that ought to be a little bit more structured and formal.
Yeah, okay.
But how, how will that be followed?
Uh, I, I'll, I'll see, I'll try to put something together. Okay, any other thing that people want to talk about, except made it going home?
Thank you already for all you've done, that's good.
And I hope you continue to get it to the new one.